Lee Clark, Almandia. Chris Gardave, Treasurer.
Here.
Robert Hemerton, Director. Doug Jack Dijarli, Director. Thomas Barrett, Director.
Here.
Superintendent Tim Wood, Superintendent.
Here, Almandia.
Okay, summary. I wouldn't do it again though.
Thank you, Chair Barrett. After our allotted time for public comment and delegation, we'll review the finance and enrollment reports. After that, we'll move into the consent agenda. Which, we do have a couple of additions on, but we'll get to that when we do the approval part of it. But the consent agenda so far will include the minutes from the April 24th regular board meeting. The board will then be asked to approve closing a 1.0 FTE student support professional position. And that's because that person is being moved into another position, so we can, we can close it. We don't need it. Then the board will be asked to approve two resignations. Then, we're sending an employment offer for Elizabeth Wadina as a special ed teacher because we are going to be asking you to approve hiring her as an elementary teacher instead. She was offered the job as a special ed teacher, but she's now interested in being a elementary teacher. Board will also be asked to approve the hiring of 11 additional staff members as highlighted in the agenda. Next, the board will be asked to approve the additions to the sublist. Finally, the approval of out-of-state travel for myself, for Nate Anderson, and for Kelsey Anis to attend Networks at Support Peer Leadership Program Workshop in South Dakota. To that, we have a couple of additional items which we'll get to when we get to the point of needing to approve the consent agenda. There's no need for a closed session today. The board will then be moving into the action items on the agenda. This includes approving the list of bills and checks in the amount of $2,476,911.35. Followed by approving the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Jesse Barrett, a probationary teacher on an out-of-field license situation effective at the end of the school year, which will require a roll call vote. And that's a requirement because he's teaching out of his field of license. Have to do that every year. Then we'll have to approve the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Christine here, a probationary teacher on an out-of-field license situation. Followed by amending policies 601, 607, 615, 617, and 6.4, which will be our third reading, so we will officially amend them. Followed by adopting policies 606.5 and 621, again a third reading. Then award the solar project bid that we had put out for, the solar panels. And award the food service prime vendor award for school food. Then, under miscellaneous, the board will be asked to approve the first reading to amend policy 503, student attendance. And I will have an update for you on the building of a new football field press box. That will be something I can show you with the layout on that in detail. Well, then adjourn our meeting. Gee Midrich. Yeah. You'll have to get yourself up in there.
Like a, like a pros.
Prostness is another way to put it, two stories and
concession.
Yep, and storage and concessions in the bottom and upper bottom. Cameras, video, and people like you. And maybe radio announcing.
Okay. We'll need the approval of the agenda.
Motion.
And wait, wait, I mean.
Second.
And as part of discussion for that, I have a couple of additional items to add now that I mentioned to the consent agenda. One is in the orange. Right now, in board book, we have up to seven S. This is now seven T. And this is to accept or approve the retirement of Gerald May. As a bus grand, effective May 20th. So, it's actually, I guess I've got a brighter color. Yours is more of a yellow color, like Jack right there. The seven T, if we can add that to approve his retirement. Then you don't have, this is so new, you don't, you don't even have paperwork on this, if we could add a seven U. We have a teacher, Nate Anderson, who needs to get CPI training. And that's often something we do with students and for teachers who work with students. But he needs to go to Fargo for that. Closest that he can get to. So we need to make seven U to approve the teacher Nate Anderson, out-of-state travel to Fargo for CPI.
Will you does the whole staff do CPI?
Not the whole staff, but mostly those staff who work with students who are on IEPs or who are students who are struggling and need additional support.
Missed out of state ground?
Yep, and it's just to Fargo, but since Fargo's in North Dakota. So we're doing, approving that. And then I handed out green sheets here. This is a an agenda item that we already have on the action items. F nine F as in Frank. If you notice, you're in board book right now, it's a motion and second to accept a solar bid project from. And there's one blank there. What we would like to do is change the amendment so that there are a first choice and a second choice. So the first choice would be not let you know what that bid is, but if when we start negotiating with that first choice solar installer, that they don't meet our needs, we would like to immediately go on to the second. We have seven. Seven bidders for solar panels, really pleased with that. We don't have to convene or want to convene another meeting or wait for another board meeting because this grant, time is of the essence and we have to get moving on it. So if the first choice suddenly becomes delayed or causes problems, we would like to be able to have a second Plan B choice. Near by Hawk, just in case. All seven bids were good, but we want to go with the top two. Plan A and Plan B. So when we get to seven or nine F, just want to read the motion that says seconded, moved and seconded to accept solar project bids from. And I'll have the chief for you to build the True North as a first choice and then I Solar as a second. But I'll mention that again when we get to that. And that's what I have for additions to the consent agenda.
And
Right, yep, and and we usually don't need to, you know, for instance, the food bid, we had four, I believe. Four vendors bidding. And their services won't be starting until so a little later, so we have time. But this grant that we have with the Department of Commerce for the solar, we have to have everything in order and approved with them by June 7. But I only give this about two weeks to get things in order, and if this first choice suddenly becomes everybody else's first choice and they can't work with us, we're going to go. So, we just want you to authorize it, and we don't want to do it without having to call back. Just for that. Also, before I, before I forget, could have asked you this or mentioned this in my report of what we're covering today. But how many of you can make it to graduation? Okay? Jack, it's
It's Thursday at four.
Yeah, tomorrow at four o'clock. And the good news is yep, nope, four o'clock, thank you.
We'll have them at seven.
Yeah. We have it at four, it will be wrapped up by five, and then people can go home and have their receptions if they want that same day. Some of them will, starting at six, I know. And the good news is, because we are doing it like this tomorrow, and not waiting until Saturday, we've been able to get up to about a dozen of the royalty kids come to graduation tomorrow, and to get the Panima downtown drum, which would not have been possible on Saturday. They'd have been at Castle Lake on Saturday, and a lot of the royalty would have been.
They didn't sell.
Yeah.
In our town.
Yep. About that, some of the kids were like, well, I got, I already got planned. Well, let's talk about next year.
Next year.
And plan ahead, Spain older. So, should I Rob might be getting better tomorrow. I'll just have her put all seven up? Or Jack, have you got any thoughts yet, or?
I don't know either. I don't see guys committing to work, it will depend on the rain.
Yeah, you can let me know. Okay, you know, you're still, okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about that interruption.
Public comments and delegation.
Nope. Can I vote on, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. The motion and second to approve agenda, May 22nd, 2024, all of the day. I oppose public comments and delegation.
Nobody here, nope.
Reports, financial report. Enrollment.
Yeah, so I will refer you for those reports to page six. Four o'clock. As always, everything in order. And pretty much tell you that our starting balance a month ago was 23.8 million, our ending balance is 30. We're have more credit than we have debits. Yeah. As usual, our fund balance continues to face. And moving on to the, what we often do is have these two reports together. The finance report and the monthly enrollment report, because they go hand in hand. So much of our financial report is tied to our enrollment. We're ending the year pretty strongly. We're down a bit from a month ago. But they'll have just shy of 1,400 students enrolled. And it's typical to drop about 15 or 20 students between April and May most years. Or May and the end of the year. As students begin to sort of check out and try to fight against that, but it's hard stat. So, we're it's always a roller coaster, but we're still holding strong. And if we include the three and four-year-old programs, unfortunately, 76, for instance. When people ask how many students we have enrolled, pre-K to 12, I usually say just shy of 1,500. That's usually where it go, we're ending, ending the year strongly. Had our ups and had our downs, but our high point was 1533 on November 1st. Kids move around a lot. And we'll start this whole process again next fall for enrollment.
Consent for 21, has consent for an amended waiver.
Page along since we're approved.
Okay. Hearing none, all voting for it. Okay, fully. And we close session, then action items, prove bills and wires for the month of April 24.
Thank you Chairman Barrett. For that, I will refer you to page 217 in your board book. And again, we have $2,476,911.35 approved for the past month of operations.
I'm going to approve.
Yeah, motion by Chris.
Selective.
Didn't make that.
Who builds, present it. Fairly decent on the bill. Hearing none, all voting for it. I oppose approve a termination and non-renewal of teaching contract of Jesse Barrett.
Thank you, Chair Barrett. And again, like I mentioned in my summary of the agenda, due to the fact that he's a probationary teacher, allowed to teach this year only on out-of-field license with a special condition from Pelsby. And we are required to officially terminate at the end of the year or something like that. You can always come back and reapply if you would like to, so. Do I submit this for your approval? And this will need that roll call vote. Is that a second Tina? Okay.
Yeah, well, in favor, you'll have to
And we'll actually, yep, I guess that works too in roll call, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Give him a plaque, he had a tough crew, man. Give him a plaque that said he had a tough crew, man.
Okay, motion, here. Hey, approve a termination and non-renewal or teaching office of Christine here.
And so you know, even though we're terminated, we're hiring her back as the special ed teacher. Now, good job. Consent agenda, seven K. Hire her back right away, so she'll still be with us.
I'll move to approve. Mr.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, another little follow vote.
Yes.
Any policies, 501. 607, 613, 617, and 624.
Thank you, Chairman Barrett. These, as I said before, is a third reading. We've already had the first two. Time to look things over and there were no issues before. Hopefully, there's no issues today. We can go ahead and approve them and and basically, we do this, you know, on a cycle, every, almost every board meeting, almost every year. Re-upping and renewing based on MSBA recommendation. So I submit this to you for.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Sorry Tina, just one of us got it.
We'll give Tina the next one.
Yeah.
Rewind the camera and see who was first.
Total finish.
Any other policy, that's the all of the fair day.
I caught it.
Hi.
I oppose control. If that policy is 606.5, lighter than Gerald's form, and depending on third being red act.
And again, third reading, and it'll be good to have this one under your way now. And off our plates, if you will, because of the red act that was mandated by the state of Minnesota. We need to have the policy guiding us on that, so I submit this for approval today.
Is a motion. In. Second. Second, that. Here we go. If a policy, we have to think. Further discussion. Hearing none, all of the fair day.
Hi.
I oppose it were those project bid.
Thank you. This is a big job. We've been working on this since back in let's say February, maybe January, and we were approved initially in March. At an initial step to go ahead and put out a request for proposals for solar panels on this building and over in Panima. And then we're when we're done with this project, we will do it again, because we've been approved up to half a million dollars worth of solar panels. Still have enough left over that we can do the elementary probably next year or even this fall. We have seven bids. Bidders were True North, Wolf River Electric, Wolf Track Energy, Century Electric, Soul I Solar, Ziegler Energy, and Ah Pandana Energy. And if you look in your brown accordion file folder, you have one side has all this material. We don't have to look through it today. But this is something that you can hold on to if you want, just to kind of educate yourselves and all this darkened technology and stuff that's pretty hard to understand. I learned a lot over the course of this year. But fortunately, we were able to work with a guy named Jan Hubbard and Bob Blake and a guy named Ralph from Solar Bear. And their, Solar Bear, if you know, is Bob Blake, is a Red Laker. He has this company and they've been helping us parse through all of this. They themselves don't do solar panel installations, but they do infrastructure projects. And right now, they're also behind a program to get electric vehicles in different tribal communities. And they're working on another huge solar power infrastructure grant for Red Lake Nation that they're working on. I just signed a letter in support by Chairman Ziki to use to move forward with this, this other project across the Red Lake Nation. And the school would like to partner with them. But with this particular grant, the Jan Hubbard of Solar Bear helped us parse through all seven of these RFPs. And using checklist that we worked with when working with Jan Hubbard, who had reviewed all seven bids with us, recommendation from him and from Chris Borg and Willie and me, view is to accept. You follow along with this green form here that is the, the new language. Accept the solar project bids first from True North as the district's first choice. True North, T R U, capital N O R T H, is one word, but as the district's first choice, and then I Solar, kind of like iPhone, a small I, capital S. I Solar as the district's second choice is the lowest responsible bidders. If True North declines to enter into a contract with us as we negotiate, then we will offer the bid to I Solar. And then we'll get going on this project, and hopefully it'll be done before winter. That's the motion before you today. And not that you have to spend time tonight in the midnight going through all of this, but when the auditors come and visit next spring, they like to see that we've done our homework. And that we presented it to you and went through all the hoops and dotted all the i's from and appropriately. That's why we killed trees today for this.
I'll move to approve.
Hey, I'm voting by Chris.
I'll forget.
Hey, man, cool. Approve a solar project bid from True North. The first strike from I Solar. District's second choice. Further discussion. Hearing none, all of the fair day. I oppose hey, award prime vendor for school food.
Thank you, Chairman Barrett. For this bid, we go off of this every single year at this time. Required to do that because we spend a lot of money on food service. And the other half of what's in your accordion, brown accordion files is another three killed, and that's paperwork on the RFP submissions by these vendors who are food service vendors. Again, the auditors will be able to see we've done our homework. We have four vendors who responded to our RFP. They were Castway Foods, PFG Reinhardt, Cisco Foods, and US Foods. US Foods, we happen to be with currently. And that again is the bidder that we would like to go with because you look at one of the top pages in your accordion file folder, they were significantly lower than at least two of the other bidders. And relatively lower than the third one. Highest bidder was over a million dollars, $1,065,000 for food service costs. Lowest bidder, US Foods, 958,000, so over $100,000 less expensive. And sometimes that sends up red flags, but we already work with US Foods. They do a good job for us. So it makes sense that we continue working. Do I submit this for your approval?
Hey, US Foods.
What's that?
Um, that's the hearing of that. It prove the award prime vendor for food is full bullet to US. Further discussion.
Oh, I'm just still a little concerned about the amount of sugar we provide our kids.
Okay. Is this mostly probably breakfast or is it?
Breakfast, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I will.
Should we run into our club as in order to get our food reimbursement money at the end of the year from the state? We're required to have certain foods on the menu and that's, I feel the same way about the food we serve at clubs sometimes, you know? And a lot of the time, it's the state stuff that, you know, even take a look at where the milk comes from, you know, the state is a probably working with a big corporation, you know, to get the lowest bid for big corporation, you know, to get the lowest bid for that milk. It's not always the healthiest milk.
Sometimes it's chocolate milk and sugar there, right?
Yeah. So it's a this battle that is, looks like it's going to cost money and sometimes you lose money trying to improve your traditional plan for your kids in your schools and your, you know, your youth centers.
One of the best ways to avoid some of the sugars is to make sure we have whole wheat cereals or wheat breads. Sometimes the non-whole wheat slips through, we've done a job.
Yeah, doctor.
Service director.
Maybe how we pair them up.
Yeah, you know, yep.
A lot of times it's some cereal with some yogurt with some milk.
Yeah.
So right there that puts them over what it's supposed.
Right.
What I learned with the daily recommend, they're already over it very quick.
Right.
And they're questioning that about the blue too, aren't they? And college now and something like that. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Like you're going to soy milk or what kinds of milk down the road gets bad.
Well, I was going to mention, you know, if you, you know, the bigger picture of all of this is maybe you could start like a farming class and teach the kids the basics of starting a farm and garden and growing their own food.
Yep. We've been talking about a school garden and Andrew, our food service director would love to see that. So no reason why we can't do that. We didn't allow. Kellyer, did she? Not only is it good to teach kids where food comes from, it tastes pretty good when you pull a carrot out of the ground. I noticed that with kids, they're, they're willing to try eating these things. They know it came from the garden. Plus going out to the garden is kind of relaxing and soothing and helps regulate kids' behaviors.
And I would recommend, you know, giving them a stipend on keeping the garden up there. It's one of the older, you know, and that would be their project, you know?
It's also can be an outdoor classroom. Like I, I've seen fourth grade teachers take kids out and measure on my classes, learning about measuring and water and soil and science and stuff like that. With math and science, a lot of it.
We, we always talk about not all the kids play sports, you know, so some of them could specialize, you know, in keeping up the garden throughout summer months. And possibly getting maybe community at stipend or, you know, some kind of stipend.
We do a lot of Kellyer, the summer, summer school by ed, sometimes going out to garden. We need holy. You know, I mean, kids didn't get too excited about that, but most who wanted to had that option.
But it's something, you know, that we have to show them. This is what we should be doing.
Right. Learning about three sisters gardening and all of that.
And also we have our recycling system though at a charter station. So maybe bring that into class and also talk about recycling and whatever we use at.
Recycling and composting.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a lot of information over from farm to food.
Yep. And we actually do work with them and we, Andrew and I attend meetings sometimes on the farm to school programs and we have about half a dozen teachers and myself doing the farm to school tour. Learning about local growers. That's in July this year. So we're going to spend a day doing that. Try to stay in touch with that.
I would like to see some of our students go on to college and get a degree in A.
Yes.
You know, or you know, something like that. Maybe this would be the most step for that. Don't they have like a big workshop or something at times? We go down and it's something in Vegas. They don't have these farmers for kids, it's for kids.
I don't know if that's their I A C or United Agricultural Council, they keep saying Vegas. This, this week was in December. And our loyal president, they see.
We go, when we specialize in things like that, we gotta bring it back to our community and show, you know, others, you know, what we learned.
That's right. Yep.
There's a fellow in, in Macy, Nebraska, his name is Ricardo Ariza. He's presented at your N I E A a couple of times and he worked with the students over there. And then they all get to grow, they all get assigned a certain stuff to plant. Then they get a stipend for taking care of whatever they, they're growing.
In your gardening.
But he's, he's been honored at two or three different N I E A. We did a program that we just started.
Yeah.
Three, four years ago.
Farmington, New Mexico. There's a sister, there's a garden where, where the students get a stipend. And then they, their fall festival in the fall and they all eat at their fall, they all eat the whole garden.
No, when I was in Kellyer, we had a, we had squash and tilapia crisp that we could serve and we would taste test it. We had a baked potato bar one day. I got all the baked potatoes. Kids learned about that. And it was really educational. It's got into.
I need.
Yep. Worship the backs class, exactly. Okay, sorry. I got us, I got us off track here. So anyway, the bid, the bid, US Foods. If we have a motion.
Okay, well, we have a motion from Tom, picking the jack to a work prime vendor. US Foods. All of the fair day I.
Aye.
I oppose. Diselenius, third reading and the man needs to amend policy by those three.
Do we have more?
Sorry?
Do we have more? I'm gonna.
There's one more after this. Another, that's the press box. But after we get done with this, I can pass that out.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think that was it. Or the action items. Yeah. The others were for the, that was consent. That was a seven as a consent. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is. Sorry? Yep, we're on ten. Yep. And so this is a policy that the first reading, we don't need to take any action on it, but it's being cleaned up by MSBA. So if you're, you know, page three eighty in Board Book, basically what they're doing is crossing out a few things. On five oh three dash three, that particular page that I think corresponds with three eighty-three or three eighty-four in Board Book. They've crossed out a sentence or two. Students will be given two days for every one day of school missed to complete their work resulting from the, their absence. That's not changed at all, but what was crossed out was work missed because of absence must be made up within so-and-so number of days from the date of the student's return to school. That's just too tedious to kind of keep track of all that. It's easier for the student to simply be allowed to have a couple of days. And if they need more, we can give that to them. And basically then also crossing out absences resulting from cumulative, accumulated unexcused tardies. Three tardies equal one unexcused absence. They cross that out and just want to make sure each school district does its own thing. And they cross out a few other items on the next page as well that is not excessive language and it's kind of, so. So they're just cleaning up. This policy. Oh, yeah. Clean out in the next meeting if you want to take a look at it and see if you have any questions. Again, nice to clean up the language and make it more student-friendly. To support. Then I'll hand this out. The other item for miscellaneous. Yeah. It moved past the others around. Just for your information, there's a few extra in there. The district has developed a plan for the football field press box, the building of the stories sixteen by sixteen on a slab of concrete. The concrete slab will be twenty-four by twenty-four. Be a little bit bigger as a footprint. Which will allow us to have some space around the building if we ever want to add onto it or put the porta potties and attach them to the sides of the building so they don't get tipped over by the wind or by kids every now and then on weekends. The lower level will serve as storage for football and baseball softball equipment and as the concession stand for those sports. The upper level will be used for staff to operate the scoreboard, make announcements, announce the game and for the press. The budget will come in around fifty thousand dollars and this is money that we had budgeted for this a while back. It's all part of the budget that we've had in place for a while. And we're going to try to stick to that budget, which is why it's sixteen by sixteen. It was originally hoped that we could do a bigger building, twenty-four by twenty-four, but we saw that that was just too prohibitive in cost and we didn't need something quite that big. So this will suffice. You can see the amounts. Concrete, site prep and concrete and building materials and labor, signage, electrical. And then contingency is just about a shy of five percent. As we get additional needs to throw in a couple of thousand dollars. Total cost forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars from a budget of fifty thousand.
How were these selected? Like compared to like, we just went through solar and put the, I don't see it.
These are actually the, who's putting the bids together, you mean? Or who's building it?
Yeah.
This was selected, it's a smaller project, so it didn't, you know, we did go out with, we don't need to get this smaller to go out with the same kind of RFP process that we did for solar or for food service, but we did reach out area contractors who have worked for us before. And the first couple of contractors weren't willing or interested because they were already too busy. So we found a contractor. Originally, we were hoping that this could become a student project with the shop class, but we couldn't make that work either. Because we wanted to get it done sooner rather than later. So we're going to get it done summer with the contractor that Chris Borg has been able to.
And who's that?
Oh, let's see here.
Like yeah, we'd said, we're standing by. Do the design.
Yep. Definitely have them do the design and help us with it.
So I scored for like builders?
Rep. Neil Mason blew in the concrete.
Blew in the concrete, yep. And the paint, the pennier. Yep. Woods lumber sourcing materials. Can't remember who he got in the end here.
Did we offer any bids to any local contractors who do?
I believe we did. Here. I can grab them for you. I'll be Chris and you can.
Did he put in for anything over this?
Say it again, sir.
James King, did he put in for any of them?
No, I don't, I don't know.
No, it could finally even need any stuff in for work. We never give us nothing.
And he's back.
We give him a project and he put his initials on there. So that's not very special.
I did it.
I was like, what? No way. And it was already dry. There's nothing to get. This should be adjourned.
He's going to get toward.
So where is this going to be then? This right where the old one used to be?
I know. Looks like it's behind the bleachers a little bit. Looks super nice, man.
And I forgot, yeah, he said it's part of the deal, package deal for Northwest Lumber. You know, sometimes you can buy a lumberyard and you can see that they've got pre-built things already. This is kind of like that, except they'll build it here.
They build it here. Yeah. We, we looked at using students to build it through their S R three. And in our time planning participation with teachers and making a bid for that. So I went from there to Josh Larson. We worked a lot with Josh Larson and he specializes in residential, some light commercial. But he's not set up for whole buildings and similar buildings. So he ended up, when he was up around fifty thousand for just the carpentry portion of it. And I went through Northwest lumber and they, they have crews that do whole buildings are all set up for it and pretty good value. The size is going to be sixteen by sixteen, so it's not real large. We had to keep it to that size to value engineer it. So we'd be within that range range. Um, it's going to have an upper basening to call it the any from it. Um, down below, we're going to keep the stairs in the inside. Get people walking down on the outside. Um, we're down around. And we'll use the main floor for storage and concessions. It won't be for football gear. My good, my good saying was, how did you, you know, I've been seeing local, you know, folks in there. Did you reach out to them? Or how'd you do it? Cause we just went through this and there's X amount in that field and this so we couldn't. That was my only question. Really, Chris, it was, it was contacts that they've had and trying to get into that low, you know, you go fifty thousand for everything the kind of people are in. And I became that they really had a hard time getting it down that hole. Um, if there's like Red Lake and Red Lake, if there's carpenters and you'd be interested in putting a bid on that. Love to talk to them. You know? We got multiple Red Lake companies or businesses who do concrete work. I'd like to do at least for the school to get in contact with them to get a bid.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. This is nothing that, you know, had not an actual item today or anything, just some information for you. So if that's what you'd like, we can get some bids from them.
So then will this prolong the bidding up longer? Like put it up and we won't get it done right away?
Uh, I told him, I said, yelped that I told him, we really need it done by August fifteenth or sooner. And they turned around and said, well, also can you get the concrete in? Um, we're with Dan for down here. Nice work. It is, price is reasonable. But again, Dan King, I don't know if he's still pouring concrete or not. That's who you're thinking of, Tom?
Jim King.
Dan King, they say Jim King. That are you thinking of?
Yeah. Or is one.
So, but yeah, I'm all ears. If anybody knows any carpenters and they can enter and, and. I don't want to delay it, you know what I mean? But I was just curious to how we selected it. That was it. Yeah, it was. Give us your answers. So. Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah. And if we do it, you gotta make, we gotta have security there. So nobody goes tagged with it.
Yeah, yeah. We're talking about that and thinking of a gigantic box, tipping it to, putting materials in there. So we're moving out of there.
Yeah. So especially the concrete, you know? Cause we got tagged back here, but big red gun is.
Prestiding.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Chris. Alright.
I went, um, I went to a meeting last week in elementary for specialists. And I visited the school and they got a nice, um, con room, which used to be an ISS. I like that. But, um, sitting in on that meeting, listening to that, some of those specialists, um, a librarian. He works with the books and the media and everything. All those computers in there are so old that he spends a lot of time fixing the computers and
Yeah.
And so we need, he needs new computers and
Yeah.
maybe another system or something.
He was, uh, always got one or two assistants, but he probably wouldn't need them because he didn't have the computers. Wouldn't have to spend so much time on the computers. He did talk to our, um, Billy, I believe, and to our tech people. And I believe that's in the table's computers. One of the reasons we held off on it this year, I think, is because we got the new computers for our esports. Which was a pricey thing, but we still have extra dollars that we can use and we can work on computers for.
Yeah. Adam Bjork, uh, he's the one who's running. I don't know if he's running it, but he's really involved with the esports and he was pretty, uh, um, instrumental in helping get those new computers for all that. So I think I have some, um, uh, connect or something. So he'd be, he'd be a good one to.
Same individual is the librarian.
Yep.
He's the librarian and he's the esports.
Yep. He's the same guy.
Yeah.
But you're, he's a good point.
So all the kids love Mr. B.
Yep. And that's, that's what I would get in that's that, uh, while we were getting new computers for esports, he was saying, oh, I use a new ones like this in my library too. Cause not only does he want to use them for library, but he wants to teach. Cause not only does he wanna use them for library, but he wants to teach kids some, maybe some esports stuff at the elementary. Should be a great way to feed the program at the high school, secondary, so. I made a note of that, we'll see where we're at, we'll maybe get him some.
On that thing on the uh press box, so if it, which we did budget at fifty thousand, so we're at forty-four and some change. Is there the possibility of utilizing the rest of it towards a new uh score table in the gym? For the high school uh basketball game, volleyball game?
We'll see if budget line item allows for. Uh you know, sometimes budgets are strictly okay, it's just construction. Might not fit for a.
Believe it or it doesn't come from this, like it's just something I think about, yeah.
A lot of times, though, we can still take them. If the right hand doesn't need it, the left hand can have it. I think we can figure something out there.
Yeah, or is it to use it or lose it?
This one wouldn't be that, no.
No.
Hey, I'm giving you some homework here. That's all I got.
With that scheduling or? Uh for that meeting?
For me, um because I was a specialist, and I always felt like being a specialist. Got jerked around a lot, like if something went on. We were the ones that had to go and watch the kids, well, if you could did this, not, oh no, gonna find out. Um, they're not even getting their full time that they're supposed to be teaching.
I checked with, I checked with Dustin on that before we had meeting. He said, no, they're getting more time. We're actually giving.
Meeting, they weren't getting enough time, cause they're gone at twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Right.
Or something like that time.
Dustin said that was one of the reasons we had the meeting, so they're actually getting more prep time now and more teaching time. They fixed that. Also, he wanted me to make sure that I told you that um with um. Yeah, one of the other questions you have. I'll think of it just a bit, I'm talking about it.
So how was that implemented? Is that what was, what you guys call the managerial decision?
Yep, but we do it with, and we meet with, this meeting was in conjunction with the teachers and. And we work together, so we don't just say, here's what we're gonna do. Listen to the principals and listen to the teachers, and we try to figure out together what works for everyone. We do the same thing at the high school.
The other thing was, you know, how long, the one fire teacher had kindergarten through two. And then the other teacher had thirteen seconds.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't like it that they were, cause they're all close with these kids on K through two.
Yep.
And then this teacher's close with these kids, and if they mix them up. The report that they they have with these kids might just go off the window.
And sometimes there's no way around that, because of the way we might be short on certain teachers, or there's no way around it. About, you reminded me of what I wanted to tell you about the STEM teacher. Uh, he has been a three-five, grade three through five STEM teacher, but the teachers were asking for him to teach. Younger kids too, so now he's going to become a one, grade one to grade five. So that's what that was. That'll be good, then he'll get to know even more kids. So we're doing more of that.
So is it, are we really losing that or buy yet? Does a kid go in now from next year, they're gonna be getting less?
Shouldn't be, not that I'm aware of.
I need a concrete. I don't, I don't need a, should be, I need a yes or no. Cause I'm told.
Read literacy act is plays a big role and um our students have spent more time with reading than.
Yeah.
Buy yet, because I've been concerned too that we have less buy at time.
And I've never supported getting less buy at time, cause kids need buy at. So what I meant to say when I said shouldn't be, as far as I know, that's not happening. But I don't know, I I'll find out after that.
Yeah, that'd be nice, cause from what I hear, they're gonna get less.
Okay, less is in like one less day or less than just a couple minutes a day?
They only get two fifteen minutes slots per week.
So I, I think I heard once every two days. Heard it now.
I will find out where we're at on that.
Just know every uh, every other day?
I think it's every other right now.
Yeah, and yeah, they're saying, well, the kids have basketball after school. Well, yes, we do have elementary here, no, but that's not enough. You know, they, yes, in the daytime. And then all those specialists have to put in so many, get in so many hours every year too. Right, and they, and according to that meeting, they haven't even been putting in. That they're right along, so they're stepping for other teachers, they care class, and then cancel their classes and.
So we try to avoid that as much as we can, because every class, every teacher's class is important. Couldn't sacrifice the art class to cover for another class. Sometimes we have to, because you know, we have strapped, as far as I know, we try to not do that.
Sorry, some other concerns were like, okay, so first class I got. First grade, next class I go to third grade, then I go back to second grade, then I go to third grade. And they're talking about how they gotta get their gyms ready for the different age group compared to how they do it now.
Mm-hmm. See, Dustin popped in, I think you've been listening.
Yeah, well, I think, there's the guy we're looking for.
Yeah, thank you, Dustin.
So the uh, there is a concern. By few of the specialists who are moving from the K two or three-five to K five. Uh and I think the, probably the most concrete concern is that prep. Like switching out materials and supplies between one grade and the next of the gyms. So we're, we have asked each partner group of specialists to spend some time over the summer. Working out, do they need additional materials in order to make this work better, do they? To figure out better transitions. So we're working with the team of specialists to figure out exactly what way to make. Just the smooth transition as possible for them. But I, I did wanna say, one of the primary drivers of the change is that. We need to increase the amount of reading instruction we're providing at the elementary school. Right now, kids are feeling five minutes a day. There is not an elementary reading book that starts to go out there that doesn't require at least ninety, and most will get a hundred and twenty minutes. A day of reading instruction, and so we're bumping that to nine minutes in the schedule next year, and that changes. All of, the whole rest of the schedule's in. And that was the second meeting that uh was held with the specialists that, you know, was able to sit in on. Stephanie had met with them on her own previously to kind of roll out the original plan. Took a bunch of feedback from that concerns, we made a bunch of changes. Based on the things that the specialists brought up, like concerns, and went back to them with the second round of conversations. And we'll continue to do that in the, insofar as we can, right? There are certain things we can and can't do within the contract or within the day. Day is the day, we only have a certain amount of time. So just, I want you to be assured that we're working with the teachers to try and make it as. Smooth as possible, knowing that any change is difficult, right? Especially if you've been doing the same uh grade levels or the same content for a number of years, and now you have to switch that up. We recognize that that's gonna be a, a challenging change for some. But I'm happy to try and address any other questions you've got.
I appreciate your response, because sometimes we hear one side, you know, and we hear the other, and it was, you know, who to go to for the other. You know, so I could be about to say it for you. And because some of the, how you responded and how you guys handled with the staff sounds a little different than how. Either they perceived it or how it actually went down, you know, and they were told. We will, we'll hear your feedback, but that, that doesn't. Kind of, for them, like you just defeated it there. Where you said, now you're saying, oh, we're gonna work together with them. It's two different stories. I'm stuck in the middle again.
That's what we always do.
This is it, and we aren't interested in feedback, but at the same time, there are general statements in those kinds of meetings, like. We will do what we can, or um we are interested in your feedback, but that doesn't mean we're going to take every. Bit of the feedback and do something with it, right? There's, there's a difference between hearing everyone's concerns and doing something without every single concern. And so trying to communicate that in a way that still values everyone's input and feedback. But also allows them to recognize that just because there's an opinion of one sort or another, that doesn't mean it's going to make it into the final plan.
Great, yeah.
And as Dustin mentioned, there are certain parameters we have to meet from this. You nailed it down, Nicole, the read act.
And I mentioned, uh, like, um, a lot of schools have the ninety minute or a hundred and twenty minute worth of reading. Do we know any type of uh numbers for minutes of uh prior?
I don't know that off the top of my head, um I did certainly research that.
I was um, came across a video yesterday about, about letting these little ones play. You know, and and we, those who've been on the board about Roy was always a proponent of. We retain better when our heart rate is up, you know, and yesterday, the, the video said. You cut down playtime, whether it's recess, buy it, and you, and you want this little kid to sit in the chair and stay still, listen. And those of us that, that work tonight here, you know, you're setting it up. Seems like for failure, you know, our, our, we're gonna be getting mad at that kid now and sending him out, right? But he can't sit there.
Especially the real, real little ones. And they, they got it figured out with early childhood. That's all kids do is play, and you watch the kid, then you learn what they know. Watch them play, then it gets more and more work and less and less play as they get older. Another good rule of thumb is however old they are, that's how many minutes you should expect them to sit still. Without a break, if they're in first grade and they're six years old, work with them for six minutes and give them a little break, six minutes.
And then it's hard, just like learning how. Our people learn, right? It's a lot different. It's not the fact, but here we are, we're gonna come up, we're gonna roll out. Sitting, listen, sitting, listen.
Recession too should not be cut back.
I remember some kids are saying they, they were, they were apprehensive about coming over here because there's no recess. Coming from back there. Is there recess over here?
Over here, there's lunch ball, there's lunch ball.
What if you don't play ball?
Then there's actually a lot of other games in the lunchroom that they can play. Or they can go to the gym and just hang out, or uh talk or walk. And a lot of girls do the volleyball, and the boys do too, just hit the ball around, so it doesn't always have to be lunch ball in the sense of basketball. And we've got Jenga, we've got board games and. Big Tacto, a big one, you know, a lot of, just came from lunch, first lunch, and I saw a lot of them, they do that kind of stuff. Those things I like because they encourage kids. Not just be active, but learn how to talk and visit. But there's always an opportunity to walk around and move, not necessarily go outside and do recess.
So do you have a team helping you, your scheduling and everything? In the curriculum even, you guys, are you guys one that style?
No, it's a team, we got principals, we got teachers.
There are committee that our, our school board members sit on that are involved in this process?
No, cause that's a managerial thing, certainly welcome, but that's more of a higher level where it comes to the curriculum. That's where you guys sit in policy, governance, budget, but if you guys wanna sit in on some of that?
Are there any uh Red Lake nation citizens on this team? The team that's on helping create the school schedule.
Typically, it's just administrators who work on the, the school schedule. And then once the basic, like the foundational pieces are built, that's when it's brought to either the site leadership teams or. Teacher group after that.
So I, I, I only ask that question because Chris is right on the way of the Shinabe people retain information, learn and live. And it's important that that is taken into consideration when we're setting the schedule for our young ones. And any, any student in this uh school that's mostly uh built on state standards. You gotta continue to think from an Inishinabe perspective as well.
We do have a lot of Inishinabe teachers who are on those committees.
And I know this is a fall school, but I still, I can't just, you know, our kids aren't. Going with the curriculum that they're suggesting, that we kind of pull back a little bit and start from the basics and start up for. For him, it's scientifically proven that we can't. Then scientists take proof of that, we can't go back to teaching the ABCs and numbers, the ways, the way we learn. And that, you can't learn that way anymore. That's all I got it from you.
For me, oh no, I'm just saying we're learning more and more all the time about how the psychology of the brain works. And as part of that, it is about movement, brain breaks, physical activity. But to go back to the old school way of doing things, you don't wanna do that either, cause you know, charters, old school, boarding schools. Punishment, or sit down and be still, and fight, I will not do this a hundred times, that kind of stuff, you know? We learn every year more and more about how psychology of children works, how their brains work.
Mm-hmm.
And how we deliver information through activities, like we talked about with the school garden. How we can get, that's movement and that's activity.
Then it seems like the schedule is going again, like you said.
Yeah, but again, being driven by the read act, so we're trying to figure out.
That was just passed.
How to add more reading without sacrificing some of the other.
And all sheriff's board members, they, they had training on this read act at MSBA for all of us to, to learn about it and no one. Lies behind it, so we've done also looked it up too at MSBA, what is this read act?
Yeah.
You know, what are we asking our administrators to do? That's what I recommend is, is look up the read act yourself, and, and then we can know why administrators are doing. Why, why they're doing the way they're doing.
Well, keep learning, and I'm always open to learning more, but in Inishinabe way of, of learning. Thank you.
Comes down for that, we can lobby with the, you know, congressman and.
Yes.
How important it is to have an Inishinabe leader in our school. And so those are the ways that start on this, how we can help bring this change.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm, but I always thought local control is something they always preach as well.
Right.
No, we don't have.
Well, they have local control, and we can pick what, what tech folks, just to a degree.
Yeah.
They say you can, it's like, sometimes I feel like we are treated like children, so I get a choice, I get. I'm in first grade, what, what color pajamas do you wanna wear when you go to bed at eight o'clock tonight? Now kids feel like they have a choice, right? Blue or red, kind of doing that to us.
Yeah.
This year. We'll give you, were there four choices of the read act? Three? You get to pick one of those four, one of those three. You know, um, so there, we're bound with those parameters. We're bound by how many minutes. But there are other ways that we can get around, we can teach reading through movement, through breaks, reading about things. His length. But we'll try to do as much of that as we can, the local control, the feedback. You guys and the Inishinabe teachers. But uh if I can steer us back, I'm gonna encourage all of you when we're done. Maybe uh block the buildings a little bit, this is our last day of school. Feel free to watch. Better wrap up here, and, and pull the kids, I would go out and visit with them.
Thank you, Dustin, yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to bring both time.
Yeah. And I'll have Bart set up seven chairs tomorrow, if you can't make it, we'll just take the chairs off and worry about it, you know, exactly. The same with Rob, if he's not feeling well, can't make it, we'll just uh make it work, but I'm happy that we'll have a. Drum there, that'd be really good. So I got three, thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, um, thank you for the time.
Awesome.
Thank you guys. So turn all those favorite AI. I suppose. Will that? Come on, that's good.
Oh.
Are we done recording now?
Oh. Yes. Yeah, meeting over.